That in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of thirty minutes of public participation as it pertains to school-related topics will be permitted at each meeting. Each person wishing to address the board will approach the podium and state his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted three minutes until the total time of thirty minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board.
I think we have someone that's going to speak. Is she here yet? No, okay. Let's move on.
And we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Clarice.
Good evening, everybody. Want to wish everybody a successful end of the second quarter. Want to extend everybody happy holidays, happy new years. Hope you get some time with friends and family. At this time, I want to introduce Mr. Larson, and he's going to be presenting our Hurricane Leadership Academy students.
Hi. I want to say thank you to the board and everybody else in attendance for allowing an opportunity or giving an opportunity to our students to present this evening. Starting last year, the Hurricane Empowerment Project was an idea to create and to provide our students that we feel show leadership potential with the supports needed to make the school a better place. Students that were identified for the inaugural group last year showed leadership on the field or on the court, in the classroom, or on the stage. These students were some of the best and brightest Brooklyn has to offer, and that is saying quite a bit. The Hurricane Empowerment Project is in its second year with a brand-new cohort of young people who are learning about themselves as leaders and how they too can have an impact on the environment around them. This year, we have asked the graduates from last year's cohort to serve as members of the Student Advisory Council. We met once prior to the start of the school year and now meet quarterly to review ways we can make the Brooklyn High School experience better for all of our students. This group has started multiple clubs, developed plans for community engagement activities, and represented our school as student ambassadors on the first day of school, as well as at the Welcome Back Rally, and as well when we invited first-string principals to the district on November twenty-first. In our last meeting, I asked four amazing young people to stand before you and discuss the impact that the Hurricane Empowerment Project has had on them. Each one was assigned a specific competency under their portrait of a hurricane through which to view the school. Starting us off will be Belma Veljak, who will discuss her experiences and its impact on the competency, cultural acceptance, and citizenship. When prompted, Belma was asked to consider the following questions in her response: How has going through the Hurricane Empowerment Project had an impact on you as a student at Brooklyn High School? And how have you used this to better the school climate?
Going through the empowerment group has had a significant impact on me as a student at Brooklyn High School. It has helped me practice respect and contribute positively to both the school and wider community. By participating in various activities and discussions, I've become more culturally empathetic and compassionate, understanding the importance of diverse viewpoints and the value of each individual's background. I have been involved in organizing events that promote acceptance and inclusivity, ensuring that everyone feels welcomed and valued. This has helped foster a positive school climate where students feel supported and encouraged to express themselves. This empowerment group has also allowed me to share ideas and learn from other people's perspectives and ideas. This exchange of knowledge has encouraged my peers to appreciate and respect different cultures, leading to a more harmonious and collaborative school environment. Thank you.
Next will be Dani Pham, who will talk to us about the competency, creativity, and innovation. When prompted, Dani was asked to consider the following questions in his response: How will you use what you have learned through the Hurricane Empowerment Project to guide your future? And what do you see as the greatest benefit for you following high school?
So, I want to start off by saying, so about this whole thing is that I think what it's important for is to inspire students like me and the other people here just talked to take action, and but not necessarily give us a reason, because I think like we all like have our reasons why we want to do things, what our causes are, right? And this wasn't for to give us a reason, but rather inspire us to take action. See, I'm one of those people who like I won't do something unless I know it's a hundred percent right. I will keep asking, I will be shy, I just need a hundred percent confidence. But what this thing has walked me through is that sometimes you just have to get out there. There won't be arrow signs pointing you to the right direction. You just have to go look, venture out, go forward. And that's how a lot of things get done in the world. You challenge ideas and you just go ahead and forward. And one of my personal experiences is definitely cold emailing for jobs, because it is hard out there. It is rough, but just finding as many emails as I could, just being bold, saying, hey, this is what I want. If they respond to me, lovely. If they don't, I take it with stride and continue forward. And this speaks to me as I'm going forward, because as someone who wants to go into medicine, it is so competitive, and it's just one of those things that you have to be bold, you have to take initiative. And that's what I want to take from it. And speaking on a broader term, like a lot, like again, a lot of changes happen because people, you know, go on the road, less traveled, they look for things that need to be changed but don't necessarily have a lot of people speaking on it. So, yeah, this is just to say, take those opportunities and venture out when you can.
Good job. Thank you. Next will be Floran Solko-Buru, who will review the Hurricane Empowerment Project's impact on the competency connection to community. When prompted, he was asked to answer the following questions: How has being a part of the Hurricane Empowerment Project strengthened your bond with Brooklyn High School? And how has it taught you the importance of giving back to your community?
Having been a part of the Hurricane Empowerment Projects, I feel like my sense of pride, service, and connection to the community has flourished. I have pride in Brooklyn community because I've seen how the school's teachers and students work together within the building. For a lot of our teachers and students, they try to better themselves and work harder every day, and they work eagerly with groups like the Hurricane Empowerment Project to improve everything they can. I have a feeling of service in our community as well, because we have worked hard on getting different clubs and groups established at our school, and will hopefully be able to serve and create a community too. For example, our school's garden club has branched out from this project as a way to serve the school better and available extracurriculars, which is an important thing in all schools. Finally, I feel like the connection to the Brooklyn community, I feel a connection to the Brooklyn community. I participated in events like promoting garden club at the Fall Festival this year, leading me to feel more connected to people who graciously support us in many ways. Our community works to help fundraise and volunteer to help us in many ways possible to let us learn and thrive. Now, taking all of this and understanding the significance of this empowerment project and its goals, hopefully it will set new traditions in our school for future students to follow. Our school has traditions, of course, but all mean things like the football team and marching band. New traditions for students will set the tone of our school as one that is active in community and always works to better themselves, which is the ultimate goal of the project that I am part of and many students as well.
Good job. Thank you. Lastly, will be Isabella Lottig, who will review the competency of critical thinking and problem solving. When prompted, Bella was asked to consider the following questions in her response: What has being a part of the Hurricane Empowerment Project taught you about the importance of being a leader? And how will you use this to better your impact on the world?
Good evening, everyone. The Hurricane Empowerment Committee, it's taught me that leadership isn't just about titles or authority, it's about like inspiring people. And it's shown me like what it means to lead and how impactful leadership can be. Under Mr. Burton's mentorship, a group of students eager to grow, like the ones back here, learned how to lead effectively both in the present and for our futures in college and beyond. Our meetings weren't just about discussions, they were opportunities to experience leadership firsthand. We tackle complex, real-world questions, engage in critical thinking, and apply practical solutions to challenges. One of the best leadership experiences during this project was creating and leading our own initiative. Like Floran mentioned, he created a garden club. My group decided to come up with an idea that would help the community access more resources. Through this, we brainstormed several possibilities, and we did a school-based supply drive. At our community bike rodeo, we came up with an idea to collect school supplies for underserved people of our community. And Mr. Burton emphasized the importance of weighing the pros and cons of each option, teaching us how to think critically about how each choice would impact our project's success, which led us to this idea. Once we launched the supply drive, challenges did arise. We needed to figure out how to coordinate with the event organizers to ensure we had enough volunteers and to spread the word effectively. However, the skills we gained from the Hurricane Empowerment Project helped us navigate these hurdles. We learned that leadership means seeing the challenges not as roadblocks but as opportunities for growth. Ultimately, our project succeeded in collecting much-needed school supplies for students in need. More importantly, it taught us that when you approach a problem with critical thinking, evidence-based decisions, willingness to adapt, you can create meaningful change. Thanks to the Hurricane Empowerment Project and Mr. Burton's guidance, I now understand that leadership is about finding innovative solutions, making thoughtful choices, and determination during difficult times of projects. Thank you.
All right. I want to take a moment to thank our students who spoke this evening, appreciate the time that they spent both in crafting their response, as well as the time that this has taken away from all of the activities that they're involved in. I want to celebrate them. You see, Ms. Veljak here is dressed up in her cheerleading uniform. She's one of our cheerleaders here at the school. And then Dani, Bella, and Floran all represented us at the concert this weekend. So, these are students who are actively involved on a regular basis, and they truly are some of the best and brightest that we have to offer here at Brooklyn High School. In here, I said, if we could please give a round of applause for these amazing students, I wouldn't mind doing that again if you wouldn't mind. And I want to thank the board for providing us with this opportunity for allowing us to celebrate some of the best and brightest that we have to offer here at Brooklyn High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Thank you, everybody. One of the things that I think that we realized last year is that, obviously, math, science, social studies, practical arts, the content of the curriculum is so important. But one of the things that I think that we really, we discussed as a staff last year is how important leadership and communication is moving forward. And so, we want, part of this program, and we're hoping, we're continuing to provide this training and these opportunities for all of our kids, but how important that these life skills are essential for success for them, right? And, you know, they live in a very different world than when I grew up, and, you know, I didn't get my first cell phone till I was twenty-six. Yes, I'm old. So, but this is, that's native for them. So, again, we want to make sure that they have the opportunity and then they have the skill set moving into whatever their next journey is outside of Brooklyn to be prepared. And they are really, they truly are an amazing group of seniors. Some of them come down every Friday or every other Friday and play games with our elementary kids in the morning, just to, you know, welcome them. And some of our second graders work our seniors and checkers and some other things like that. So, it's really kind of fun to watch, connecting with our high school kids, our younger kids. And this group in particular, on the first day of school, they wore their shirts and then they greeted our kids as they walked in the door. And I will tell you, it was like paparazzi. They were, it was the funniest thing to watch, how excited our elementary kids were that they were there welcoming them. So, not only are they just great kids, they're just great role models. So, want to thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Ms. Crull, you have a statement I'd like to read before we move forward. Want to thank, we have parents here, staff here, students, community members, elected Moving on to an important topic of the board's consideration of a potential policy change regarding open enrollment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. You know, I think it's very important to reaffirm and communicate some important points as we move forward, and I wanted the board and really the community to hear my perspective on things. I know ultimately that this is a board decision, and the board will be considering this a little bit here, but truly, I want you to hear my perspective of things. And truly, my interest is solely of Brooklyn, our students, our families, and what's best, and our staff, and what's best for them. From a matter of fact and some data, the board and the leadership team have been discussing the prospect of open enrollment going back since the spring of 2024, including public board meetings in April, May, October, along with community presentation on October tenth, where I presented current enrollment data trends and potential impact of enrollment in the district. On December third, the Board of Education considered the first reading of this policy change. Over the past nine months, I've shared enrollment data, guidance, and suggested procedures for the board to consider. I believe the board is considering this decision with the best interests of the Brooklyn School, students, families, and community in mind. Since 2014, the district has seen enrollment decline by almost three hundred students, resulting in a reduction of staffing and programming since then. Particularly in 2020, when I came back, we saw a significant impact from COVID, and not to blame everything on COVID, but we have not rebounded from a student enrollment since 2020. We've remained about the same. Today, we stand, at one point in the district boasted an enrollment of over fourteen hundred students. Today, we stand at an estimated enrollment of approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty students. Since returning as your superintendent in 2020, we have seen a substantial increase in the number of students that actually open enrollment outside of the district, students that live in the district, city limits, that actually choose to open enrollment outside of the district. That includes public, private, Cleveland Municipal School District, and charter and community online schools. The data is telling. Right now, we have almost two hundred resident students in Brooklyn currently, that currently attend schools outside of the district through publicly-funded private school vouchers, open enrollment to public, online, community, and charter schools. Over the past year, we have seen, in Brooklyn alone, we have seen a fifty-six percent increase in families taking advantage of private school voucher program because of the recent changes in publicly-funded voucher program. And I want to be clear, this is not a testimony against parental choice. I fully support a parent's choice on where they want to send their schools. I believe, as a superintendent, we offer an amazing product here in the district. However, parents always have that right to send their children. Me, as a father, I lived in one district, I chose to send my children to another school district. That's a parent's right, and I one hundred and fifty percent support that. The reason I say this is I just want to mention the absolute impact that this voucher program is having on Brooklyn and other public school districts throughout Ohio. The reality is simple, and I fully understand the questions surrounding this policy change, potential policy change. Here's what I anticipate the impact will be on the school district. For every new open enrollment student, the district will receive state funding, supporting resources that directly benefit all students in our schools. That funding is approximately the same current funding level that Brooklyn receives for students to attend here, around two thousand dollars. If a parent takes advantage of the voucher program, they have the ability to up to, depending on grade level and their family income level, up to about eight thousand dollars of publicly-funded dollars will go to that family through the voucher program.
That comes off our bottom line.
That does not, the voucher program does not come off of our bottom line. If anybody enrolls from a district charter, community, or our online school, that comes out of our bottom line. The state has arranged where the voucher program is separately funded from public schools. So, we don't see the impact in terms of money lost to the district. We see that impact in the number of students enrolled in the district.
Good. Appreciate it.
If the board considers this policy, I truly don't anticipate more than seventy-five students across all grade levels to be, to apply for this program. And even though this equates to a handful of students per grade, K through twelve, it keeps students in our seats, staff doing their jobs due to fear of jobs, and the ability to keep, provide top-notch programs and opportunities for all of our students. One of the big considerations that I've had conversations with staff, and I think this is an important mention, we are very fortunate to have smaller class sizes in our district. And part of the consideration of this program is, is I do not want enrollment numbers to increase so much that it begins to impact our staff instruction, it begins to balloon our staff sizes, that begin to impact student learning and staff instruction. In the end, to ensure this, the application process will take place this spring for a limited time, based upon grade level capacity and application-specific requirements. And we've talked about this before, this policy is and can be reviewed annually, and I have recommended to the Board of Education to annually meet, meet to review the impact of this policy on the school district. I think it's important, if the board considers this change, to continually seek data on the impact of class sizes, behavior, attendance, achievement, and finances. I think those are all considerations. I want to be real clear, because today's been a pretty busy day from a communication standpoint, but it's been a good day. This is not about athletics. This is not about athletics. This is not about bringing kids in this district to displace our current Brooklyn students. This is not about money. Even though we will receive some finances from open enrollment students, we're not going to receive enough money to make a dramatic impact on our finances. Mr. Sheeran and I have talked about this. It's not a big impact. This is about remaining viable as a school district. I want to say that one more time. This is about remaining viable as a school district for the students and families we serve in this district. I recognize this is an emotional topic, but it's an important decision. I will support whatever, and I say this, I will support whatever the board decides. I only want the best for our district, our students, our families, and our staff, and our community. My sole purpose in this role is to support all of those people, including our Board of Education, and our students, and our staff, and regardless of any other factor. Change is difficult. I do not want, I do not see this as a negative. In fact, I see this as an opportunity to make our district a place where all want to attend. We have amazing students, families, and staff. I am dedicated to ensuring that all students, both current and new, receive an exceptional educational experience, and I am confident that this change will be an opportunity to enrich our school community for years to come. That being said, I am one voice in the cog of decisions, and I wanted to make sure that I said this to you, said this to our audience, said this to our community. Whatever the board decides, I will support one hundred and fifty percent. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has, parents, community members. Please reach out via email, and we can set up a time to meet in person, talk via email, or talk over the phone. Wish everybody a happy holidays. That's my report.
Thank you.
Are you okay with answering some questions now so that we can?
Not at this point.
Okay.
You have the next topic, too?
Oh, yes. Thank you. I want to just announce, we're required to announce our district hearing for a district calendar. We have a tentative calendar finalized for the twenty-five school year. We have to open it up to the community in terms of any input they have regarding the dates. I will post that online in our organizational agenda, and then on January seventh, we will have a comments for the public regarding that district calendar. Once those comments are heard, if there's any, then I would ask the board to consider adoption of that calendar so we can notify our families and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crull.
I was going to dismiss the kids, but they're already sitting down.
They were out.
We will move on to the treasurer's report with Mr. Sheerhart.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to report that so far to this point, to the end of November, we've actually received about eight million dollars for our levy income, which is about forty-six percent for the year. Foundation from the state, we've received about one point one million, which is thirty-eight percent for the year. Investment income was seventy-five thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and fifty-one cents for the month of November. Unfortunately, because of the Fed dropping the rates, we have seen a decrease in our investment income for the month of November. If you recall, last month, it was about eighty-six thousand. So, that is coming down at this point. Year-to-date, the investment income is four hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Let's see. To date, we are, personnel and benefits are around about forty percent, which is actually a little bit lower than what we were expecting to hit. And operations are running at thirty point seven percent for the year. So, total revenue, we have received about forty-nine percent for, through November, and total expenses, we have spent about thirty-eight point four percent for the month. Next month, I will be bringing the tax budget to you for approval at the organizational meeting on January seventh. And I also have an informational presentation that I'd like to do in regards to levy types
So, I wanted to go over some basic terminology for levies. First, to start off is the, your house values, when your house is put up for sale, or when it is appraised by the county. That's called the appraised or market value. The next is the assessed or the taxable value. That is thirty-five percent of what the appraised value is, and that's what the tax is based on, that value. You have the full and voted tax rates, so that is what the levies go on the ballot for. That is what the millage that they're approved for, or the dollar amount. The effective tax rate is the rate that is reduced because of, as values increase, there's a reduction factor that's applied, and that brings the effective millage, I'm sorry, the voted millage down to the effective millage. Rollbacks and credits, some people are able to get what's called a homestead and a rollback credit through their real estate taxes through the county and the state. With the rollbacks, the state, the taxpayer gets the credit, and then the state reimburses the district for the loss of that money. And that, it helps the taxpayer because they're not paying that portion of the tax. The state is actually picking that up. I believe there's a House bill that's out that they are, out there that they are talking about voting to take the rollback credits away, so that two and a half percent that the state is picking up and paying for the taxpayer may be removed, and the taxpayer will have to pay that piece. But that has not been, hasn't been approved yet. Then the millage is a term that's used for the tax rate. And one mil is equal to, is basically a dollar divided by a thousand. So, if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, that would be the market value. The assessed value would be thirty-five percent of that, or thirty-five thousand. Then one mil would be, you could actually, the easiest way to do is drop off the three zeros for the thirty-five thousand and just take thirty-five and multiply it by the mil. So, one mil would equal thirty-five dollars for that taxpayer. There's types of, the types of levies that are out there. There's additional, which is a new levy. That brings in new money to the district. There's what's called a replacement levy. Those are not very, they're not used very often, and what that does is it takes a current levy with the effective millage, the reduced millage, if it's put on the ballot- If it's put on the ballot and it's voted in, then it actually replaces the prior, and it bumps that millage back up to what it was originally voted at. So if it was a six mil levy and it was approved, then over the years, as the valuation reduces the millage, if you do a replacement, it will actually take that old one off with the lower millage and replace it with the, the original millage from when it was passed years ago. They're not, they're really not done that often because it, it, it increases taxes because it takes it back up. Then renewals. Those are continue, continuations of current levies. So there, it doesn't increase taxes. It's based on the same effective rate that it currently is at. There are types of levies. There's an inside, which is an unvoted levy, and that, I'll go over that in a second, sorry. Then we have fixed sum levies, and then fixed rate levies. So the inside millage is a levy that is, it's considered unvoted. It was passed by the state, so it is, it is law, and it is based on 10 mils. Brooklyn, Brooklyn's inside millage is 4.6 mils, and it's actually, that 10 mils is split out by, like, it could be the county. The city may get some of that 10 mils. The library may get like 0.5 of it. So it's 10 mils for all of the taxing districts within the city. So Brook, again, Brooklyn's, Brooklyn schools gets 4.6 mils. That can only be adjusted by the Budget Commission or courts, and as value changes, the, the revenue changes equal to the percentage. So if the value goes up 10%, the inside millage goes up 10% as well. If it's, if the valuation goes down by 10%, then the millage also goes down by 10, or I'm sorry, the revenue goes down by 10%. The rate is constant, the revenue and the values are what's variable. We have fixed sum levies. These levies are voted to generate a specific amount of money. They're limited to bond and emergency levies only. The rates are set each year by the, the Budget Commission. So they have to calculate the valuation in the district, then they calculate based on how much money that, that levy is going to bring in to set the new rate based on those, on those. And then the district only specifically receives that dollar amount. It's the, the value and the rates are the variable for, for those levies. Then we have fixed rate levies. Those are the, really the most popular. It's current, those are considered current expense, and those are based on a rate. So if you would pass a levy for, say, five mils, it doesn't look at the dollar amount that it's bringing in, it's based on that millage. But then over time, as the valuation increases, the reduction factor for this also kicks in and reduces how much, how much the millage is, sorry, it changes the effective millage as well. So in this one, the value and the rates are variable rather than the dollar amount. So just a summary of it, the, the inside is considered unvoted, and it's shared among the political subdivisions, like the city, the county, the library. It moves in the direction proportional to the value change. So if the valuation goes up 10%, the levy brings in 10% more. Then there's fixed rate levies, which are voted. Those are the bond and emergencies. That's the, a rate is set to produce a specific amount, so it always brings in the same dollar amount. Those values increase as rates decrease. So it's, it's an inverted, inverse relationship. So as one goes up, the other comes down. Fixed rate levies, again, are specifically rate vote, approved by the voters. The rate is adjusted for the reappraisal changes, and as the value increases due to the reappraisal, the rate is reduced, resulting in no, no tax impact. And then the value increases due to new construction. So here's some, some examples of the different types of levies and how they are, how they're affected with, in this case, it's increases. So in the first column, you can see the inside, that's the inside millage. So if a house is, is valued at 100,000, and the effective tax rate is 10, the 10 mils, it would bring in $1,000 in revenue. So if the, the new, after the appraisal, it goes up 10%, the new value is 110,000, it still applies that same 10 mils, and it would bring in $1,100 in taxes. In the second column, it is a fixed sum, which is the fixed dollar amount. So if it was eight mils, it would bring in $800. If it went up 10%, it would be based on 110,000 valuation. You can see the millage actually drops to 7.27, however, it still brings in the same And then the fixed rate levies, in this case, it's 100,000, and it's, the effective rate is 50 mils with a $10,000 increase. The new effective rate actually drops down to 45 mils because it was a 10% increase, so it's 10% decrease on the millage. And that brings in $4,950. So you can see it went from 5,000 on the, for the revenue, from 5,000 down to 4,950. So the, in this case, the district would actually lose $50, even though it, it increased the 1,100 on the inside millage for a, a net of $50, a $50 increase. Basically, it's the same for a decrease in value. So if you, if, if the county comes out and reappraises your property and it goes down, then you basically have the same thing, where on the inside millage, it would start at 1,000, and then it would go down by the, the 10%. So it would drop to 90,000. It would only bring in $900 in, in tax rather than 1,000. Then the fixed sum levy, it, again, this, this is based on the dollar amount, so the tax revenue would be $800, but the millage would jump up to 8.88 to bring in the same dollar amount of $800 because of the, the, the reduction in the value. And then the fixed rate levy operates basically the same way. So if it went up, or, I'm sorry, if it decreased, the valuation decreased by 10,000, it's down to 90,000 now, the effective rate would actually go up the 10%, which would bring in less tax money because of the reduced value on the, the valuation. So the district would only receive 4,950 instead of the 5,000. So in, in the total, you can see we're up on the top, basically a $100,000 valuation, the district would have received $6,800 in, in taxes. Due to the decrease in values, it now receives $6,650 instead. Why are we constantly seeing additional levies? One of the reasons is the, the reappraisal happens every six years. With a reappraisal, the county auditor actually hires appraisers to go door-to-door to look at each, each house, and they assign a value based on what their appraisal is. That's what the, the county reports for taxing purposes. The midpoint, which is every three years, is called a triennial update, and what they do with that is the county auditor looks at comparable house sales to everybody's houses, and then they assign that value based on what the market value is at that point, and then that's what they apply the, the, the millage to, to figure out what your, what your tax cost is. Most levies are supported, supporting government operations. They do not allow for revenue growth. That's, that's what the reduction factors between the, the devoted millage and the effective millage is, and that's due to House Bill 920. That was passed in 1976, and the reason that was passed is because prior to that time, when house values went up, the millage wasn't changed. So government entities were receiving additional inflationary monies for that. So House Bill 920 was passed to kind of curtail that. So people, government entities were not receiving basically windfalls because of inflationary There is an exception to the fixed rate levy rule, and what that is, is the 20 mil floor. So because of, because of House Bill 920 and the reduction factors that are used for the effective millage, as the millage drops down, the state put into place, a couple years after 1976, where they have a 20, what's called a 20 mil floor. So part of that is the current expense levies, let's see, current expense and inside millage. So those are, those are all added, all the effective millages are added together, and if they're above the 20 mil floor, then that's okay. But when valuations cause the effective millage to come down, once it drops below the 20, it's called a 20 mil floor, then the county by law has to increase it to 20 mils. And the reason why is because, like you said, the, the state put into law that the counties, that districts cannot fall below 20 mils, because they, they assume 20 mils is the minimum requirement in order to operate. Again, this, the 20 mil floor excludes the emergencies, incremental substitute bonds, and permanent improvements. So those are outside of the 20 mil floor. During reappraisal, the increased values can cause the effective rate to decrease below the floor. The floor adjustment, it's annual, it's not, it's not cumulative, and the reason for that is because every year, the values, if the values go up, you'll get farther away from the 20 mil floor. If the values go down, then you'll get closer to the 20 mil floor. So that's why it's not cumulative. It's always, every year, it's calculated by the county. This is just some school district 20 mil floor statistics. Every increase in valuation causes more districts to fall below the 20 mil floor. Right now, 73% of the 611 districts in the state of Ohio are below the 20 mil floor. 15% of the school districts are within 5% of the floor. So one of the things that we've talked about at one of the, one of the professional development meetings that I've gone to, was that they, they are kind of assuming that within probably the next 10 years, almost 85% of districts will be at the 20 mil floor because of the way the valuations are going. The district has a, a renewal levy, well, there's a levy that needs to be renewed, I should say. It's a six mil current expense levy. It was renewed back in 2019 for five years, so it will be running out in 2025. It raises $1.9 million for the district, and the levy has the ability to, to go on in May and November. And the, the Board would have to do a resolution in order to move forward to put that on the ballot at one of those, one of those two dates. And that is my report.
Yeah.
I know those kids are sadly marked.
Yeah. I'm surprised everybody's still.
Can you imagine a room of 20 of you guys? It'd be exciting. I've been on the Board 15 years, so I've probably interviewed 20 Treasurers, and there's one question we always ask them, one Board member always asks them, like, explain to me in common sense the word "millage," what's the definition to all the Treasurers? And none of them get it right.
Mate, I thought I did.
You probably own one, 20, you know, but that word "millage" is a trick. So anyway, it's just funny. They are nerds.
We will move on to comments from Board members and Board committee reports, and I'm going to start off tonight. First, my committee reports. The Domestic Relations Commission met on December 4th to sign Christmas cards for the senior care facilities in Brooklyn. Councilman Borowski hand-delivered them that week. City Council had their last meeting of 2024 on December 9th, and will reconvene on January 6th for their organizational meeting. Brooklyn Cares donated, are collected donations for over 85 families this year, and the food pantry has been abundant in assisting families in need. I wanted to take a quick moment to speak on the open enrollment policy that is on second reading tonight and up for approval. The residents voted us in to these positions to make the hard decisions in the best interest of the district, and we don't make these decisions lightly. This current Board has been in discussions regarding open enrollment for about eight months now, and to be transparent, I was on the fence because I did not fully understand what open enrollment entailed, how it could help a school district, and why it would be beneficial for our district. It's not about recruiting athletes or even scholars. It's about educating children and providing opportunities while also financially benefiting our district. Long story short, vouchers are hurting our schools and taking your tax dollars to other districts. So why not open our district to those looking for a quality education and in turn getting our tax dollars back and chasing our state funding? The alternatives, cutting programs or staff, are not desirable. And just to be clear, we are not opening our doors on the first day of school, just letting students in all willy-nilly. There is a application process, a cap on each grade level, and expectations to be followed by incoming, each incoming student. After some very thoughtful discussions, this Board agreed that open enrollment would be in the best interest of this district. These discussions were open to the public with the data well-presented by Dr. Klaris. We also provided two opportunities in October at Open House to hear about our future forward plans for the district, which was reported and currently on, available for viewing online. I am very excited for this next step, and as a Board member, I am dedicated to providing and maintaining a quality education to our young minds. Other than that, I want to wish our families a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and please take some time to remember those that can't be home with those, with their families this holiday season. And we will move on to Ms. Rapp.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being in attendance today. I love it when the community members come to our, our Board meetings. It's, it's good for everybody to hear what's going on. I first want to say I don't have any recent committee reports. Most of ours meet quarterly, and I gave my report for November. Other than being on our core group for our, our bond issue and renovations, there's a lot of exciting new things that are happening in our district, and I'm honored to be a part of it. I'm very excited that we're going to be, soon be starting with our, doing our renovations with our preschool and our family resource center. As I know of other communities that, that have similar programming and buildings that house our preschool students, I think it's a, just a great opportunity for them to be in one spot, and I think it's a great opportunity to have a family resource center available to our residents. I did attend a meeting last week where we talked about our renovations for our gymnasium as well as our athletic field, our complex. A lot of good things, you know, happening, a lot of renovation, one which I feel that our, our students, our staff, and our community will be very proud of once we, once it's completed. completed. Let's see here. I want to thank Brooklyn Leadership Academy. Mr. Larson, thank you for bringing the students here. I've gotten to know all four of them through different presentations that they, they have made, or watching them on the field, or, you know, at a, at a musical performance. But Bella and Belma, I touched my heart because I coached both of them, and they have always been leaders on and off the field. So it was great to see them in a different role today, but in a very similar role that they've had with me. Let's see. I just want to thank the, the, I guess, the residents of this community. It's been one year since I've been elected to sit on the board. I have learned a lot. One way for community members to get involved is to run for board positions. And, you know, I feel that I've learned a lot more about the responsibilities of board members. I've learned about finances of our school. And although, there's a lot, okay? Like when you present, like I'm finally getting it, and I feel like I can answer questions.
Only took a year.
Well, again, that's a lot. That's a lot. But just the differences between board issues, levies, and grants. And, you know, again, I kind of want to reiterate what Kelly said. You know, I feel that the community has, has trusted us to take on these positions. And there are, there are things that come up where we have to have discussions and, and long discussions about where we see our school district, where we want to see our school district. And I think that the board that we have now, they take every consideration into, into fact before we make a decision. I do want to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season, and we're looking forward to, you know, coming back in 2025 and seeing a lot of good things happen for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hezremi.
Thank you, Ms. President. Appreciate it. First, I want to thank Mrs. Cipriani, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Keller. The concerts on Saturday were amazing. I had to, I would say unfortunately, but fortunately attended three different ones, 2:30, 12:30, 2:30, and 4:30. It was, it was great to see all the kids. The band, the seventh and eighth grade band, we were blown away. Like, like my mom was cheering, everybody was cheering. It was such a cool song playlist that they did, so I was very pumped about that. I want to thank everybody that attended the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. I think we had over 120, 130 people there to, to get the tree lighting. It's still on, so if you want to visit, the, we had a couple of issues, they've been fixed. So if you guys want to head up there and take a look at it, it'll be on until January 2nd and take a look at the Christmas tree lighting at Memorial Park. I want to thank Belma, Bella, Danny, and Florin that came up to talk. They did greet my kids on the first day of school. They, they still talk about it. I think it was great to see the older kids walk up to us. So thank you, Mr. Larson, and everybody involved with that academy. It's great. The presentation Allison brought up with the, with the library transition, thank you to the city for voting that, to transfer that property back to the schools. Just to see the, the, the plans that we have in place for the family resource center and the preschool. I've talked to a couple of preschool teachers. They're excited. It's just going to be a really, really cool building for them to be a part of and their new home for us eventually. And then I, I do want to bring up the, the open enrollment. So most of you know I have four children in the district, and, you know, obviously there's parental choice like Dr. Klaris had brought up. You know, we can take our, our kids to other schools, you know, parochial schools, private schools. But I believe in this school district. I've graduated from this school district. I know what the staff, the teachers, the admin, their, their heart is in it as much as they, they want to see our kids succeed. And to bring other kids to a product that's so good, that's so passionate about learning, I'm excited to bring other kids involved in that. Whether they're from Parma, Cleveland, Lyndale, The Acres, wherever they're, they're surrounding us, it's just an opportunity for them to get a good product. Every day, my children come home and they tell me something they learned or something that was exciting for them, every single day. And I'm not saying there's other schools that don't do that, but there's something special about Brooklyn, and I'm so open to have people know how special this school district is. Jason has three kids in this school district. We have a vested interest in having a school that, that promotes the education for the future. And I'm going to be the first one to vote no on something I don't believe in. I'm not going to do it just to, just to, you know, be with the tide. I'm 100% for open enrollment. I'm, I'm 100% behind the staff and the admin, and I, I want the community to know that we did not take this lightly. We've been talking about this since April. Mrs. Crow brought, Ms. Crow brought this up, that we've had open discussions. Dr. Klaris had a, two community meetings that was open to the public. It's been out there. I'm sorry that some people feel like they were blindsided by it, but you aren't. And we're happy with the decision we're about to make. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Crow.
Thank you. Mr. Hubbell.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. First, I just want to thank everybody that helped any family in need with the Brooklyn Cares Holiday Gifting Program. It's an amazing thing that the school does, and it helps so many people. And it's, you know, it's one of the reasons I'm proud of this district. Another reason I'm proud of this district are those kids that just presented to us, Belma, Danny, Florin, and Isabella. I mean, this just speaks on the things that this school can accomplish and what the kids that we have here can do and the staff that helps guide them in that direction. I feel like we sit here every month and get blown away by more and more kids. And, I mean, it's amazing. We have begun a Brooklyn Alumni Association. I just want to say that if you have graduated from Brooklyn, if you are an alumni, our president Ben Maholik created a Facebook Brooklyn Alumni Association. Please, please join it, be a part of it. The plan is to do some really good things, scholarships, anything we can to help the community. So please, if you are an alumni, you want to help out, join the Brooklyn Alumni Association on Facebook, find out how you can help more. Just a quick shout out to someone I had coached, Brooklyn Alumni Jenny Young. She went to Penn State for high jump. She broke her ankle last year and missed the whole season. Well, she is back. They had their first indoor meet. She won the bronze medal. So she's back, she's ready to get at it. So just a little shout out to another good thing our alumni can, can accomplish. And just very quickly to piggyback off my fellow board members and Dr. Klaris. Yes, this open enrollment is something we have talked about for, for a long time now. And like Mr. Hezremi said, I have three kids that will be graduating from this district. I graduated from here, my wife graduated from here, my parents graduated from here. This school means the world to me, and I would not be considering this if I thought it was a bad idea. I think we need to give kids a chance to get the education that Brooklyn can offer. My son himself is in a class of 60 kids. It's almost nobody. So we have room, we have the staff, and, you know, therefore it is something that after long considerations and talks, I support. And I just say anybody that hasn't checked any of Dr. Klaris's videos and reports or even the speech he gave just a little bit ago, there's a lot of good things behind this and a lot of good reasons why, and I hope you guys can see it.
Thank you. Ms. Neil.
Thank you. First, before I forget, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone as well, too.
I know that, too.
Brooklyn Leadership Academy, wonderful. They did a great job. I'm sure the whole group done a wonderful job, all of them. First things first, I am on the Polaris Committee. We did have a new superintendent that we voted on December 10th, Diane Sander. She has experience from Lorraine County, Lorraine City Schools. She's been in Polaris for 11 or 12 years now. She's moved up the ladder, wonderful person, new energy, and I achieve just meeting all the superintendents, I believe.
Yeah.
And I think it's going to be up and coming. She's a, she's a high-energy person. I think a lot of great things will be coming out of Polaris as well, too. As far as their construction, the new building, they had to do some little adjustment to the footing to meet with the other building that they have. I don't know if you guys are aware, they were building a, they're building a 22,000-square-foot addition for electronics, robotics, and automation. So that's pretty exciting for the future of Polaris kids, Brooklyn kids. And the LPN program is up and running. And then sophomore to junior's class for Brooklyn. As far as percent of kids that have applied, we have the highest percentage of kids at Brooklyn that apply at, at Polaris, 71% of them. 57 kids have applied. So it's a wonderful opportunity. If you ever have a chance to tour that place, it's, you wouldn't want to go anywhere else. Every opportunity is there. As far as the open enrollment goes, I've been on the board, like I said, 15, 16, 17 years. We had this conversation a while back. I am open it, been open to it for 10 years now. I am not opposed to it. Kids are kids. You know, you're going to have good kids and bad kids, no matter where they come from. I don't think that's a problem. It's how you deal with it. What I do want to know, and I'll just say this, is 70% of the school, public schools in the state of Ohio open enrollment? You can go look on the website, just Google that. It's a fact. Thirty, there's 26 districts in Cog County. There's only one or two that do do it, Cleveland and someone else, and I could be wrong. I can't remember who it is.
You know, Kinston did, but I'm not sure where they're at.
Right.
It's really, it's more prevalent in Lake Erie, Marine.
But 70% of the schools open enrollment, just so you know. That's the way, that's the way of the world. So I think we're going to be okay. Again, we lose, my biggest concern is always leave, when we open the doors August 1st, the 195 people that leave, that's a million dollars. Probably, Rob, would you say, in that ballpark? It's probably close to a million dollars. That's what leaves the door, once we open the door, those 195,000, or 195 people. That's the way I look at it. So it's a math problem. We just got to figure out how we want to solve it. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. We will move on to approval of minutes and financial statements, and our reader tonight is Mr. Neal.
Resolved at the minutes of the Board of Education meeting, be adopted and no action taken by the Board. Board of Education said meeting is hereby reaffirmed and approved.
May I have a motion, please? May I have a second? Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerheart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Hezremi.
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell.
Yes.
Ms. Raff.
Yes.
Ms. Crow.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves financial statements, receipts, and expenditures for the month of November 2024, including all purchase orders paid and then and now statements for the month, for the month as submitted, as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Standing.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerheart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal. Yes. Mr. Hezremi.
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell.
Yes.
Ms. Raff.
Yes.
Ms. Crow.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the second reading and adoption for the following board policies. PO 226-1, Protection of Individual Beliefs. PO 5111, Eligibility of Resident/Non-Resident Students. PO 5113, Inter-District Open Enrollment. PO 5200, Attendance. PO 5780, Student/Parents Rights. PO 6320, Purchasing and Bidding. PO 6460, Vendor Relations. PO 7540.03, Student Technology Acceptance Use in Safety. PO 7540.04, Staff Technology Acceptable Use in Safety. PO 8308310, Public Records. And PO 9160, Public Attendance at School Events.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Ms. Crow, just one, and Mr. Hezremi, again, I apologize, Mr. Hezremi, if I came off rough before, but I wanted to, to, I know I've heard from, from a community member, a couple of community members today, and I just wanted to give the board, board an opportunity. I know you've heard from community members or you've heard from staff. Do you have any specific, and since we're, we're live streaming this, does the board have any specific questions regarding the policy tentative procedures, knowing that we're still, we're still looking to finalize what those look like? We have them 90%, you know, confirmed, but that's going to be a conversation between myself, leadership team, regarding anything with regard to open enrollment, like questions, policies, procedures, application timeline, like, please, like, I think it's an important piece, too, if you want to ask, to provide that opportunity. Yeah, so if you can, just go over the criteria. Yeah. So, 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 and, and again, please, please, please know that these are, these are potential change. We're still working through finalizing them. We are, we are looking at, so, so open enrollment is, can be considered two ways. Adjacent open enrollment, which means open enrollment to districts that neighbor our school district, which would be Cleveland and Parma, or fully open enrollment for any district in, in the area. From a procedure standpoint, this is kind of what we're looking at, we're looking at a limited timeframe from an application standpoint. That would occur from March 1st through April 15th. Once we, once we get all of the applications, then I have the ability as superintendent to extend that deadline for, for another month up until May 15th. But after May 15th, we would not consider any open enrollment students. So it's a very, so it's a limited springtime. The reason that we want to do that is because, number one, we want to make sure that any students that apply and are accepted have a, have a chance to transition well. Like, I, I think we, we lose sight of, of this, that we're dealing with kids. And I, and I love what all of you said, like, I want them to experience what, what we have in this district. However, transitioning to a new school is not easy for anybody, including kids. And so that's why we're looking at a limited window. For, for, if the board considers, let's just say, the, the, the applicant, the policy for the following school year, any newly admitted students for next year still have to reapply. New students apply next year or this spring potentially. We, we consider, we consider different criteria, priorities, and I'm going to read these off what I have, and so please. First priority, parent guardian, grandparent has full-time employment in the Brooklyn City Schools. We current, we don't, we currently do full-time employee. We do not extend that to grandparents, but that becomes that first priority. Second priority, any current open enrollment students, that would obviously be for the following year. Third priority, siblings of current open enrollment students. Fourth, students former district of residence was Brooklyn City Schools. Fifth, parent guardians are alumni of the Brooklyn City Schools. And then the sixth priority, first come, first served. So what we would do is we would, we would gather those, those applications, sort them by that priority, and then begin to, begin to work through those applications. Part of the application process is all, is all hard copies, meaning we're not going to accept applications for open enrollment via our final forms. The purpose of that is to, to make sure that we have all of the data on the student that we need prior to, prior to the application. So if you've left out a, you know, a 504, if you've left out an IEP, if you left out a utility bill, whatever it may be, as far, as far as our requirements, that application does not become final until we, we check off all of that paperwork and we, we consider it processed, and then it goes into the fold of that application process. Students can be rejected or denied application for, for three reasons, for four reasons, excuse me. Any type of significant suspension or expulsion. A, a student that's on an IEP that we do not have the ability to serve, and I'm going to rely on Mrs. Jones during this process because she works with residents, she does residency at her office, she will be an integral part of, of that application process. But if we don't have programming that the student has on their IEP, then we can't admit them. And then the, the last piece is... is, is grade capacity. And, and I, and I think this is really important. It goes back to the, the class size piece. And I'll, I'll use, I'll use preschool and fourth grade as, as the example, because they are already closed. Should the board approve this policy in a few minutes? Those grade levels are already closed for twenty-five to twenty-six school year, meaning we will not accept applications for preschool or fourth grade. Preschool, number one, we're already at enrollment capacity where, where we're looking at how do we serve the current students we have there. Also, there are specific ratios from the state of Ohio that Mrs. Jones is mandated to follow, and we really can't mess with those. That's very specific. Fourth grade, the reason we wouldn't accept open enrollment applications in fourth grade is because right now we have three teachers in that grade level. They're already at twenty-one, twenty-two students per, per class. Well, internally, we have a, we, we have kind of a designated limit that we want to set on class, and fourth grade is already there or approaching. Because remember, if a student moves into the district, they, they have, they have every right, and, and we will accept them as an enrolled student. So what I don't want to happen is accept open enrollment for, for fourth grade specifically, and then we have four, five, six students enroll in the summer, and those class, those class sizes get too high. So from that capacity, we, we really want to make sure that we're, we're continuing to look at our class size. We continue to work with, look at the instruction of our staff, because I, you know, that is my promise to, to our administrative team, our staff, our parents, and our community. We need to maintain the class sizes that, that make Brooklyn special. If you are a, a open enrollment, you were approved for open enrollment, you, you are, you, you will have to transport your student to, to Brooklyn. And so transportation for any newly accepted open enrollment student is, is at that parents, the parents have to do it. The one piece for, for renewals that I think is important, renewing applications, so let's say we go through the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and students admitted, and, and they have to reapply. Well, they reapply, one of the conditions that we can't consider for, for acceptance as a open enrollment student that following year is attendance, right? We don't, we don't want to, we don't want to create issues where, where it's impacting, number one, impacting the student's attendance, right? Because that's the important, they gotta be here in school, but also want to make sure it doesn't impact our attendance. So see if I've covered everything here.
Other questions? Ms. Rafter, Ms. Crawford.
So go back to the very first thing that you said. We currently have, there are, our policy as it is right now, we currently have staff members who, we have students.
Correct.
Enrolled.
Yes, indeed.
So that, then when you say you extend it, so it's, it's parents, guardians, and now grandparents?
That's currently the way we have the administrative guideline written. Again, this is tentative. This is tentative. I guess we want to give, we want to give employees that opportunity if they're, if they're grandparents, and they want their, their students, their grandchildren to come here. We want to extend that opportunity. I, I will say the students, our staff member students are, are, they do not live in Brooklyn. And, and just like our Brooklyn kids, they're amazing kids. And, and I love the way, what, what each of you said is it's about educating students and adding to the value of our school district. And any one of them, our Brooklyn students who live in the city, look at them as Brooklyn, right? Look at them no different because of where they live, and I think that's kind of an important piece for me.
You, there was a lot of times that you had publicly with the community had engagement, the board meetings and community open hours. When did you, when did you, and how did you notify the staff?
Um, I notified the, so after the first board reading on December third, I notified the staff on Friday, December sixth. What I, what I, what I said to them, kind of summary is pretty much what we've said here, why we're doing it, what we believe the impact will be. However, opened us, opened it up to our staff in terms of if they had any conversation or want to have any conversations with me about, about any concerns. And I've also given an opportunity this week to meet with me, kind of in a, in a big group session. To be honest with you, Ms. Israani, you know, we, there have been some concerns, because I think you're gonna get any, you're gonna get those small concerns with, with any type of change. But overall, I have not heard a tremendous amount of negative energy behind this potential change. That doesn't mean that people aren't concerned, because they're, they're concerned with change, but I haven't heard too much from, I haven't heard personally, I've heard personally from, I think, two staff members, and those were kind of sidestep conversations.
And you gotta remember, we get to vote on this every year.
We do, and I'll be honest with you. I, I, because I, I think it, it is an emotional topic, which, that's not a criticism, I think because it's a change, I would, I would be in the position where I would annually, as we go through this process, review the data. And so if the board approves the process, approves that change tonight, like, I will, I will be speaking at a, either a board work session or, or one of these meetings in May, kind of updating the board with how it's gone, what we've seen, some of the native, the numbers surrounding this application process.
I think I, I, and I kind of reiterated when I addressed the board before, but policy change, and I think everybody should know, is that, you know, it's, it could be, you know, a very good thing for us. And, and again, policies can be changed, or, you know, regardless, so I think that's good to know.
I think the board has every right and every expectation from me and my office to, to provide data on how it's going, right? Because I, like, we're not doing this, I'm gonna use your word, willy-nilly doing this. This is important. And, and if it's, if it's working, I want to tell you if it's working. If it's not working, I'm gonna make the recommendation that we go back. And, and I think we're not going to, we're not gonna know unless we go for it. Mr. Hubble, you have any questions?
I think you covered it all.
Mr. Neal, you have any questions?
The advertising of it, how are we gonna put it?
Yeah, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be very simple. What I, what I plan to do either tomorrow or Thursday, yeah, if you, if the board changes the policy. What I plan to do either tomorrow or Thursday in my, my holiday message to families, I'm gonna embed, I'm gonna embed the change of policy in that message. After, once we work with the administrative team, secretarial staff in terms of what this all looks like, how is it gonna be, it's gonna be simply posted on our website. We're not advertising, we're not, it's not social, we're not doing any of those things. We're just going to simply make it available to, to our, on our district website regarding application procedures. I will also post on the website as we go through the process of, of which grade levels are already closed for capacity. So from the beginning, preschool and, and fourth grade will be closed to capacity due to current, current enrollment numbers.
We also have staff that have, had open enrollment in their schools in the past, correct? Including yourself?
Including me, so I have, I've, yeah, Ms. Delise. I've worked in, I've worked in two school, school districts. One in Erie County, where it was kind of the, that was the way of the world. I mean, everybody was open enrolled. I, you know, when I worked in Sandusky, I remember, we had a girl open enroll all the way from Norwalk. That was about a thirty-five minute drive from the yellow lady. And then when I worked in Cogga Heights, it wasn't necessarily open enrollment, but, but it was, there was more of a quasi-tuition-based piece. But, but we had over thirty percent of our students in Cogga Heights at the time were outside the villages. So in the villages, you had Cogga Heights, Valley View, and Brooklyn Heights all funneled into the school district. About thirty to thirty-five percent of our students funneled into the district from outside of those three villages. It, it's, it's always, it's always been positive in my experience. Nothing's perfect, nothing ever is. But it was, it was generally, and I think, you know, Cogga Heights has had it for probably close to thirty or forty years, so.
Anyone else?
And again, I will encourage anybody who's listening, anybody who's here, that if you have any questions or concerns, please email me, and I'll be more than happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby remands students listed in the attachment of the academic co-curricular achievement athletic honors and band honors.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
I'm gonna take the time here and read the letter that we all received, I believe, and I did, there's a other athletic accomplishments on here, but I think this is just a little special letter. I'd like to read inside of the, the band honors. Congratulations, senior trombone floor player, player Florence O'Callaghan, who was here earlier today. As he was recently selected to participate in the 2025 Ohio State University Band Honors Band. This will mark Florence's second year as a member of the elite ensemble, the longest-running honors band program in the state. Four Brooklyn students were also selected as alternates, alternates, including Aaron Sharp, trumpet, Isabel Lotte, clarinet, and Danny Pham, both, both were here, Tuba, Jaden Schultz, baritone saxophone. Over nine hundred individuals, student nominations were submitted by a band, by band directors from nine states for this year's event. Two hundred and seventy musicians, representing over a hundred and fifty high schools, were selected for these three hundred bands. This year's event will be held Friday, January thirty-first through February second, with a Sunday concert performance in Wygle Auditorium at the OSU campus. That's a heck of an accomplishment for those people there.
That's awesome.
That's great.
There's a lot of academic or athletic on here, so I didn't want to go through all three notes.
Florence did dot the i?
I don't know. That's a good question.
It's a second year, it's a second year.
Then he made it. Second year guy.
Awesome. Florence keeps me on my toes. Seriously, he does.
I'm sure he does, and he should.
That's right.
Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code thirty, thirty-three, twenty-seven point zero-two, and the procedures set forth in our environment of education, the board, after having considered multiple factors, authorized to determine, determine the impracticality of transportation for students eligible for transportation under R.C. thirty-three, twenty-seven point zero-one, as submitted by the school per, school, per the attachment list on file at the board office.
May I have a motion, please? May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Just a reminder, this, these are students that live in the city, that, that attend school districts, school outside of the district, and state law requires us to offer transportation, transportation payments to those students. So this is that ongoing list we've talked about. At the end of the year, we will verify enrollment of these students at these school districts, and the district submits a payment to those families for transportation.
Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby enters into an agreement with PSI Affiliates Inc., PSI Associates Inc. For title, two A, we'll go with. Support services for the twenty-four, twenty-five per year attached per the ye, per the attached contract, and we're even on file at the treasurer's office.
May I have a motion, please? May I have a second? Questions, comments?
What is, is this a?
This is, this is St. Thomas More using their non-public funds, and so we're the fiduciary agent, so we have to approve, approve that as a, as a board. But this is all, this is all through them, and it's no impact on ours.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education authorized superintendent to enter an agreement with Lake Tax Solutions for providing E-rate support services for two networking projects or attachment agreement on file at the treasurer's office.
May I have a motion, please? May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the attachment agreement of, with CMSD for excess cost of children with disabilities pursuant to section thirty-three, thirteen point nine eight one, ORC thirty-three, twenty-three point one for ORC, and rule thirty-three, zero one, dash, four eight, dash, oh two, dash, F for education, educational purposes for the twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year per attachment.
May I have a motion, please? May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approved the renewal HVAC maintenance agreement with gardener, effect, gardener effective January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, attachment on files, the agreement on file in the center office.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following classified resignation as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves unpaid leave for the following classified employees as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the additional hours effective one-six twenty-five, one-six twenty twenty-five for the following classified personnel for the remainder of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as noted in this resolution, as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves employment of the following classified personnel twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, as noted, as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following persons for the twenty twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school year supplemental assignments with provision that the individual complies with all Board of Education and/or high school, Ohio High School Association rules and regulations and the State Department of Education regulations pertaining to the proper certification licensure and/or the first aid training and full felony, correctness of the job description attached to their supplemental contract contingent upon the successful completion of background check and credentia, credentia, credentia. Boys basketball, Jim Burman, boys basketball player.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following certified resignation as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
This will be effective end of the year. We'll post it in the spring.
Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following persons twenty-four, twenty-five supplemental assignment with the provision that individuals comply with all the rules, regulations, State Department of Education, regulations pertinent to, pertinent to proper certification, fulfills the requirements of the job description attached to the supplemental contracts contingent upon a successful completion of background check and credit, cred, whatever, credentia. Uh, Jim Burman.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following individual twenty-four, twenty-five school year supplemental assignments with the provision of such individuals comply with all rules, regulations, State Department of Education, regulations pertinent to proper certification, fulfills the requirements of the supplemental contracts as noted, as noted.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Israani.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn Cities, Brooklyn, resolved that the Brooklyn Board of Education approve a resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing six-point-one mill tax levy for the purpose of current expenses requesting the Cogga County Fiscal Officer to make certain, certain certifications pursuant to section five seven zero five to zero three and five seven zero five two one of the Revised Code as noted, resolution on file at treasurer's office.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments?
Sorry, Mr. Shearhart, um, can we discuss a little bit on the, the impact of the mil dropping under the twenty mil floor?
Yes.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, um, as I talked about in the presentation, the, um, the district, due to the valuation increase, the effective mileage will drop below the twenty mil floor. So what will happen is the county, based on state law, will pump that back up to the twenty mil minimum. Um, it's, it, it's actually gonna drop about, about one mil. So, the, um, the reason behind this is if, if the renewal, it won't make that much of a difference, um, as far as the class one residential, um, it will basically stay the same. The class two, without the renewal, the district will lose about seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. And class two is commercial and, um, and industrial. So, in putting this back on the ballot, it will allow the district, once passed, to continue to receive the seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars on the class two, the commercial and industrial. Um, both, both the class one and the class two are based on the twenty mil floor. The class two will still be at twenty-five mils, a little bit over twenty-five mils. So because that's not under the twenty mils, that money we would still be collecting and, and, and would still come to the district. That's why I believe it's important to do the, uh, the renewal and put that on the ballot.
So what you're saying is, pass or fail with this levy, the residential tax owners are going to be paying that same tax to get to the twenty mil floor?
Yes.
Pass.
It would bump it back up.
Pass, we would get the money from businesses. Fail, we would lose the money from businesses.
Yes. So, we would, we would end up losing, if, if, just say we didn't put the renewal on the ballot, we would lose the seven-hundred-and-forty thousand on the class two.
But either way, this levy would ultimately have no effect on homeowners.
On, on the residential piece, right. Because that, that is falling below the twenty mils already, so that would bump back up anyways. So it's important not to lose it. And, and if we, if we lose the seven-hundred-and-forty, we have two chances to pass the renewal, May and November. So if, if that didn't pass, that would drop off in January of twenty-six, we would lose that money. That seven-hundred-and-forty thousand would be gone forever. Um, with that loss, more than likely, within the next couple of years, we would have to go for a new levy levy.
And that would be at a higher percent?
It would, yes, it would end up being at a higher one.
And this is based on the adjustment of evaluation of the properties in the city of Brooklyn, correct?
Yes.
Because of that?
Yes. Like, like I was talking about, because these are fixed sum levies, as valuation goes up, the effective mileage comes down, which is what, what actually drove it down. Um, we were, we've lost, with this valuation increase, we've lost almost five mils, which is why I wasn't expecting us to drop below, until I got the valuations from the county and the, the new levies. And that's how I found out that, um, we're dropping below the twenty mils.
And like you said earlier, we are the only district in the state of Ohio.
Yes.
Correct?
That is correct.
I've spoken to two other, I've spoken to two other treasurers that I know, and they're in the same boat.
Yeah, yeah. There's, um, unfortunately, because of the valuations that were so high all the way, I mean, nationally, um, uh, the districts in the state are all getting hit with this. It's, it's not just Brooklyn, it's everywhere. Um, there are pockets in Cleveland that were receiving a, I believe it was a thirty-five to fifty percent increase. So it's, um, I believe in Brooklyn, it was roughly about seventeen percent valuation increase. Yep. And there's nothing, it, it's not anything that the district did or can do. Um, it's all based on state law. There's, there's nothing we can do about it. The valuations are based on what the county auditor has come up with, based on whether appraisers have actually gone door-to-door and, um, you know, it's, it's just, it's there. There's nothing the district can do. I mean, if there's something I can do, certainly do that.
Pass levy?
Yeah, definitely.
No, I know that-
We'll start there.
Yeah, let's start there. I know that you had, there was an issue in the beginning with evaluations originally not being correct, and they had to adjust that.
Yeah, way back, um, it was in September or October, the county released how much the district was going to receive. And what they did, they included the non-reducible millages. So they included emergency levies and bonds. So, and some of the, the audience may have seen, the plain, the county auditor released it to the plain deal, and the plain dealer said that all the districts were going to receive basically a windfall. Um, they were saying that Brooklyn was gonna receive two-point-two million. After we started confronting the county auditor about that, it came out where we actually were only getting two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. Because once you remove all the additional levies that should not have been included, that's when it came down to the actual amount we were receiving.
And did you double-check with the county this time? Make sure that's in?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I probably have the treasurer account, just to verify it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Shearhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roserini? Oh, sorry, Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Mr. Roserini?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn Board of Education approves the real estate transfer of the Brooklyn Bank, Brooklyn Branch, Cuyahoga County, Cuyahoga County Public Library, Le, County Public Library located at forty-four eighty Ridge Road, Brooklyn, Ohio, four-four-one-four-four, from the city of Brooklyn to the Brooklyn Board of Education. Resolution on file in the treasurer's office, as noted.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Just want to say thank you to the council, city council, mayor, uh, the city in general, just for making this a very easy process for us. So we're, we're very excited for, for the next steps, but, uh, kudos to them, uh, for making that process. And, and again, I want to say, too, like, nothing really to do with the, the resolution here, but the, the city council, um, also, also made it very favorable for, for the district during the renovation process. They, they, they waived our, their, the building fees, permit fees, which saved a tremendous amount of money towards, towards this project. So, um, I know other school districts are not as lucky as we are, and so, um-
We weren't lucky before.
Yeah, we're lucky now. We're lucky now. But thank you to, to our council for, for doing that. It, uh, again, it-
How did Mr. Mosley vote?
I think it was seven-oh. I'm not gonna, like, as far as I'm concerned, it was seven-oh. And so, um, like I said, that, we, we are their partners in, in education in the community, and we appreciate them. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you to the city.
Mr. Shearhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roserini?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
This is a discussion.
So we're gonna have a discussion?
So this is just a discussion. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure we're, we don't have, you don't have to discuss. And you can go write the nominations, but I wanted to give the board the opportunity to discuss this if they chose to do so. This is a three-
Does anybody have any?
This is, this is a three-year appointment, and we are up for our, every, every so often, the six associate districts get a second seat. Brooklyn is up for their second seat, I believe, in twenty-twenty-eight.
Correct.
I think that so. So this will be a three-year appointment.
Does anybody have a discussion? Or I will take nominations for the office?
Yeah, I'm not gonna leave Brooklyn here.
Second, ma'am.
Any other nomination? Nominations are closed. Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education, in accordance with RC three-three-one-one point one-nine, hereby appoints Mr. Rocky Neal to serve on the Polaris Career Center Board of Education for a three-year term, beginning January one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Congratulations.
Mr. Shearhart, will you call a roll, please?[1607.42]